Good afternoon, everyone. The Board is meeting today in work session for a presentation of the Superintendent's Draft Fiscal Year 2023 Budget. The Board will be discussing budget needs and offering some feedback to the Superintendent, as well as we'll have the opportunity to have some questions asked and answered. So without further ado, we'll turn things over to Superintendent Michael.
Thank you, President Williams, members of the Board. Today, we're presenting the FY23 Draft Superintendent Budget. A lot of work's gone into preparing the budget at this point. I guess just kind of say a little summary of what you're going to see in just a few minutes. We really have not added help to the budget substantially as in the form of how we're going to help students achieve more or have additional support for what they need in the classroom, how we're going to address the needs of Kerwin, those types of things. But we've tried to do a couple of things. We've tried to partially address the inflationary factors that we have in many of our contracts. I know in a lot of systems, they go through the budget and all line items, they'll raise an inflationary figure. Unfortunately, in Washington County, we've not been able to do anything like that, like, for instance, go through textbooks, materials, equipment, all those things to supply an inflationary factor to the whole budget. What we have done is hand-selected specific things that we know are going to go up, that we have no other source to address, and we've increased some inflationary costs with some of those contracts. The other thing we've done in this budget is we've looked at what we want to preserve long-term that's currently in various grants, and we try to pull some of that, some of those items, some of its staffing, majority of its staffing, into the general fund that would preserve it for the long term. So that's another significant effort of the budget. Probably the highest priority in the budget for me is to try to create a salary resource pool. We worked extremely hard over the last couple of years. Two years ago, unfortunately, we were only able to give our staff a 1% raise. That was all three bargaining groups in general. It was no steps, there's no other hidden costs or salary to that. That required more money than the total new money that was provided for the budget to get that 1% raise, meaning we had to make internal cuts to get to that. Last year, we were able to provide a one and a quarter percent raise. Again, that required more money than all the new money that we received in the budget. We have to address the staffing shortage and salary shortage that we have not been able to address the last couple of years. So that's a high priority in this budget. You'll see that in our salary resource pool. It's not going to provide a substantial raise in the sense of where we are with inflation, but it has the potential, if we're able to preserve that salary resource pool, of providing probably what we should have provided two years ago, let alone what should be provided and made up over the last couple of years. So I'm hopeful that we're able to preserve that salary resource pool going forward or even enhance it, and I'm hopeful we can reach, you know, agreement with our associations because we value them dearly. I've said now in a number of different meetings over a period of time, I can assure you, the staffing crisis is very, very real. And we, it's not just COVID-related, although it's partially COVID-related. The teacher shortage is very, very real, and the administrator shortage is very, very real. And this is one of those, you know, kind of mark in an envelope, put it somewhere, open it up in two years, and see if I'm right. If we do not address this, we are going to have serious teacher shortages, students will not have teachers for an entire year. They'll have some form of substitute or combined class or something, and you're going to have a leadership shortage if we don't address this. Right now, with COVID, we're in the $15 an hour, and everyone being very competitive with pay, our ESP employees need more money as well. So I really believe that's kind of our highest priority. The one addition that will support students differently in the budget, you'll see when staff reviews this in a few minutes, is three potential counselors, social worker positions. However, before I say there are three new positions, they're new to the general fund, when we see what happens with the budget process, when we get to the second draft of my budget, and when the Board takes it over, I would like to let that to staff if they want to preserve long-term some positions that are currently funded with grant funds or whether they want to expand three positions and deal with the grant funds when they run out in two years on other counselor and social worker positions. So that will be really the only thing that's going to address something new that's presented in this budget. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Prue to go through the details. We can answer questions slide by slide. You'll see that the staff has prepared kind of a key up in the right-hand corner of each of the slides, and if you follow the four-page document, where it's referencing a Roman numeral and a letter, that'll kind of let you go between the PowerPoint and the four-page summary. So if you have questions as we go along, we'd be glad to answer them as we go forward, or we can answer some as we move along and some at the end, but we'd be glad to entertain them in any way. I think a couple unknowns to us in the budget. We just found out about the resource officers and so to get an increase for the Sheriff's Department. This budget doesn't currently address that, so in my second draft, we may need to address that. We're still finalizing those numbers, and we're still in negotiations, I think, with the Hagerstown Police Department, what our pay might be for that. So that's another area we need to look at. We also, we have some things on the upcoming agendas that might be changes that would affect the next draft of my budget. So with that, Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Dr. Michael. I think we'll jump right in. So these are the harriers, the major headers that I think we're going to discuss with you from anticipated revenues, FY22 alignments, FY23 grant adjustments, FY23 new positions, FY23 inflationary increases, compensation and benefits, and budget adjustments. And again, as you look at the four-page summary, those are the titles of each of the major headings as we work through the document. So we head into revenue, and I'll take a quick moment. Again, we've tried to work on a somewhat of a standard format for you. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, that little gold ribbon has a identifier that it's Section 1A. So again, on your four-page summary, that is Section 1A of the document at the top of the first page of the four-page budget summary. But looking at state anticipated revenues, really, our formulas are now beginning to be driven by the blueprint for Maryland's future. The formulas now, in terms of how we were going to receive our state revenue, are really predicated on not just the foundation like it's always been in terms of the numbers of students, but a lot of the other monikers, the special ed funding, the transportation funding, the compensatory education funding, EL funding, are all driven as a percentage of what's happening with foundation based on the number of students. So we feel like we're getting a better handle on being able to anticipate and forecast revenues, although there's a lot of unknowns in this first year. So really, we think, actually, Mr. Sissel and I were talking with Dr. Michael this morning, we think we've got a good handle on where the revenues are, but there are some unknowns in terms of what's going on in the current environment, and there's rumblings of other legislative action this year, so that could remain to be seen. But what we do know is our average rolling three-year enrollment is down 272 students. So that is effectively impacting the amount of revenue we receive. We're anticipating 13.1 million in new state revenue, which is a significant number above and beyond what we've seen over the last number of years. But it's also important to note that some of the, some of the grant funding we received out of what we effectively call baby blueprint, which was the first blueprint bill, are now part of the foundation formula. So there are items, as we get into expenses, you're going to see that are moving from grants over into the general fund that are going to take up some of this 13 million. So this 13 million is not all new money, some of it's just moving from grant restricted funding into general fund funding. On the local side, again, the average is affected by the same reduction of 272 students. We're asking the county to hold us harmless to the average that we held in FY22, which really cost them nothing. It really means that they're going to provide the same aggregate dollars that they provided in FY22. While we don't have the numbers yet, we do anticipate that the educational effort escalator will also impact the budget ask or the requirement for the county at 2.5%. So we're all anticipating 2.65 million in new money from local county government. Moving on to expenses in Section 2A, opening with alignment for FY22. This year, there's only one. We met the needs and some challenges by adding an attendance secretary at South Hagerstown High School. That was a new position added this year that we need to justify into FY23, and with benefits, that comes to a cost of $44,000 for that employee's wages. Into the next section, which is 2023 grant adjustments, this first section is going to cover two pages. You can see the total grade out there to the right. It'll come in full color on the next slide, but it is $1.86 million. And these are positions that, again, as I mentioned, were previously blueprint-funded positions that are now moving into the general fund with the change of moving those funds from restricted funds into foundation unrestricted funds. From a general education perspective, we're looking at one elementary math content specialist, two behavior support teachers, and four behavior support paraprofessionals. And in special education funding, it's 21 special education paraprofessionals, one coordinator of mental health, contracted speech pathologist support, and contracted interpreters. And again, the total of those two slides for salaries and benefits is $1.86 million.
Again, I want to be clear with the Board. This is all part of that 13 million. It's just moving from restricted funds into unrestricted funds, but you still need to meet the same needs. So while we're listing a, you know, substantial number of positions here, these are not new positions to support any new initiatives, anything different than what we're currently doing this year. These are not additional positions. These are existing positions.
Along the same lines, last year, we also received the pre-kindergarten expansion grant. In doing that, we, if you recall from last year, we moved these 12 pre-K teachers and 11 pre-K paraprofessionals out of the general fund and into the pre-K expansion grant. That grant is going away, so we're bringing those same positions right back into the general fund, as well as an amount for pre-K instructional materials, and that's a shift in the budget of $1.51 million. Then we're beginning to move some positions from federal grants. So some of these are positions that are funded out of the ESER grant. Again, there are two slides here, beginning with the two literacy achievement coordinators and the EL teaching position. You may recall, these are positions we wanted to move into the general fund last year. These were in a striving readers grant that we had from the federal government for several years that ended at the end of FY21. We were anticipating to bring this into the general fund last year, but the funds were not available. So we funded it one year out of the ESER funding or the COVID relief funding, and we're looking to bring that money over into the general fund this year. We've also added, to address some needs over the course of the year, two assistant principal positions at South Hagerstown High School, and also two student intervention specialists. Those were funded out of ESER grants within the year, and we see those as needs moving forward, so we'd like to solidify them in the general fund here in FY23. On the administrator support line, you may also remember, last year, we were advocating for one additional associate accountant. Again, no funding was available in FY22 to apply that position. It was funded this year out of ESER funding. With all of the grant funding we have, both from the federal government, as well as the way the Kerwin funding is beginning to lay out and how it has to follow the student, as well as requirements that keep continuing to change from GASB, the General Accounting Standards Board, additional staffing in the accounting department is necessary to make sure that we can continue to provide the reports necessary to meet all the requirements that are set forth before us. Over the course of the year as well, we also added this year a halftime clerical at Westman Heights Middle School. This was actually to take a halftime position and make it a full-time position, and also the same in health services, where we took a halftime position and made it a full-time position. We funded that in FY22 out of ESER funds, and we're looking to solidify that in the general fund moving forward. So the total of the previous, of this slide and the one before it, is a shift of $881,000 from federal grants into the general fund. Only thing new for FY23, and to reiterate what Dr. Michael said just a few moments ago, is for three new positions that are either counselors or social workers. We do currently have, I believe, it's six in the, in ESER funding, and so really, I think if this position, this item makes it to the budget, it'd be, you know, be looking to staff to determine where is the greatest need for these additional positions so that we can meet the needs of students in the best ways possible, and that is a $256,000 cost for this, for this slide. Looking at inflationary increases, we have increases here across a number of line items as you look at the summary, anywhere from software pricing increases to operational supplies, things like custodial supplies, paper towels, toilet paper, you name it, any of all the types of items used across the system. Utility increases, you know, we can't look at the price of fuel, whether it's, you know, diesel fuel, gasoline, heating oil, the price of your electric, all those things are driving upward at the price of crude oil. So we've got increases set aside for utilities, and also increase in facility maintenance. What we do know, what we're seeing across bids, prices of building materials and contract services is increasing steadily and continually. So this application of inflationary increases has a value of $2.68 million. You can see actually in the Section 5A how that lays out by category to get a sense of the increases for each particular item. Within compensation benefits, this is our largest increase in the budget. We have a number of items here. We're looking at an increase, again, in the substitute teacher pay to address the shortage we have with substitute teachers, looking at an approximately $20 per day increase across the board for each of our classifications of substitutes. We also have mandatory increases in our pension rates that has to be funded. And as Dr. Michael mentioned, we have significant resources set aside for our salary and healthcare resource pool to reward our employees for the excellent work they're doing every day and for being here with us, and really to keep pace with what needs to happen and address the shortages we have in any number of areas, teachers, administrators, and ESP. And again, we're also chasing the minimum wage law in the state of Maryland, where we have to be at entry-level pay of our hourly employees at $15 an hour by January 1 of 2025. So we're looking to hopefully address some of that concern in FY23. As you know, over the last number of years, we spend time every year in October, Dr. Michael, myself, the finance team, meeting with each department head, we look at each individual line item, and we call this the budget adjustments by program. Various increases, decreases, slides move from this page to that page, but in total, those adjustments by program account to a net savings in this year's budget of $1.86 million. And with that, I think we can definitely take any questions you have on any section of the budget, and Dr. Michael, I don't know if there's anything else you want to reinforce.
No, I think the largest part of our savings this year was in turnover credit. So the last couple of years, we've really tried to adjust and tried to right-size the budget the very best we can. I think we have a lot of unknowns going forward with some of our items, so we didn't try to make it too tight, but the largest part of that savings was not cutting like we have the last couple of years, but turnover credit was the largest portion, meaning, you know, where more senior people retire or leave our system and new employees come in at a lower wage who pick up some turnover credit. So we account for turnover credit in our budget.
Colleagues, questions?
Do you have a question on the first page of the actual draft budget there? I see there's an $80,000 loss in the tech.
Mr. Evans, could you either pull, yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Sorry about that, thank you.
That's all right.
On page one in the draft budget there.
Are you on page one of 41 or on page one of four?
Yeah, one of 41, sorry.
Page one of 41, all right.
I see there is an $80,000 loss in the tech fees there. Could you explain that?
So this is a shift away from the iCare program, which is an insurance program for damages and loss and repairs on the iPad. So those are, I think if I remember this correctly, and maybe the team can support me, I think we're moving to an actual cost-loss program and away from sort of a prepayment program insurance, and that's that decrease.
Because I think we just approved something for this fiscal year recently to, for that insurance, didn't we, or am I thinking of something different maybe?
We approved services to do the repairs, where we have a handful of firms where we ship the items to and they come back to us repaired.
Right, okay. I do have more, but I got to gather them. So if anyone, if anyone else wants to jump in.
Go ahead.
No, I'm not sure what they are yet. I got to, I have my notes here, but I don't have the question in my head yet.
Denise has a question. Denise, Mr. Gupta?
Yes, after accounting for moving grant positions into the general fund, about how much more are we getting from the state?
Can you say that last part again?
About how much more are we getting from the state after moving the grant positions into the general fund?
I'll defer to the team, but the 13 million, you'd have to basically deduct the pre-K program, the special ed, 21 special ed, some of those things. It's several million dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I think it comes down to, you know, if you look at the overall swap, I mean, if you think about Section 3A, which is the amount of funds, those are the positions coming from the blueprint, previously funded blueprint positions, that's 1.8 million. The pre-K expansion grant, which was another state grant but not covering the blueprint, is 1.5 million, so your total's at 3.3. And then we're adding, you know, the federal grant money is 4.1, well, 880,000 to bring us to about 4.1, 4.2 million rough numbers. So if you've got 13, not quite 13, one in original money, you're left with roughly, Eric, 8.7, 8 million, 700,000.
Or even, if you look at it even in total revenue that we're anticipating, you'd be at 11.4 million that would be new revenue. It's not covering things that we're already doing.
Thank you.
When you look at Kerwin, this was one of the years, it kind of goes in waves. The next two years, we're going to get much smaller increases from the state. I guess because of my longevity, I was here when Thornton kicked in. Dave and Eric, you might refresh my memory, it seems like one year, we got like 18 million from the state, and one year, 21, 22 million. That's when 18 million and 20, 21, 2 million was real money. So while 13 million seems like a gigantic increase over what we traditionally have seen from the state, this is not new to us. 20 years ago, we saw numbers larger than this when they changed formula. The unfortunate part for us, this was, I think, to be a windfall of money, where we could implement new strategies, new efforts, new initiatives to try to address student need, which is what Kerwin really does, is, you know, we're supposed to be closing gaps while raising the achievement of all students, or all students, reducing achievement gaps and start a whole variety of programs to support students, as well as implement things for staff and various things. Unfortunately, we've gotten caught up in this inflationary piece that's pretty much going to wipe out what should have been a year where we should be adding additional resources and supports to support our students. That's how I'm kind of looking at it.
I have a question. It's just a odd little thing. I see it in the budget year after year after year, and I've probably been told what it is, but it's adult correctional facility instruction.
Can you get us on page, after we're shared, bottom of page?
Page eight.
Page of 41.
Of 41, I think it's 17. It's down 5,000, but does that mean we're paying for instruction? What is that exactly?
We, I think we do talk about this on an annual basis, Mr. Stafford. I mean, for students that may be at the county correctional facility who are school-aged children, we're provided to, mandated to provide instruction to them, and that's the expense.
That's what I thought it was, but, you know, it's 35,000. We could be using someplace else. But we're required by law to do it though, right? That's the thing.
Really, in some sense, no different than home and hospital teaching, where a student can't, you know, they may be sick, they may be ill, not able to attend school, you provide home and hospital teaching. In this case, the individual is not ill, they're incarcerated.
I'd like to talk a little bit about the three new positions at a cost of $256,000. Those three, those three counselors and social workers. You can't hear me? Okay, I'll repeat what I said. Can you hear me now?
Pull the mic on right up to you. You're good.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to talk a little bit about the three new positions at a cost of $256,000, those being the counselors and social workers. First, I'd like to voice my support for those positions, and then I'd like to say, I don't believe that's nearly enough, given the caseloads of our counselors and social workers, and given the needs of our students. I wish we could do more. I think we need to do more. Can you tell us where those people would go at this time where that has not been determined?
No, and the reason I can't tell you where they would go at this time, or even if there's more, is because over in the ESER money, we did two things with counselors and social workers. We looked ahead to concentration of poverty schools. So the state created a grid, and basically, over each of the next number of years, if your school is at 55% or more of poverty, you'll be identified as a concentration of poverty school. So what we did last year with the ESER funds, we tried to predict, you know, the years that new schools would become concentration of poverty schools, and we added counselors and social workers to be, so that those expenses would be picked up in the year that the school's been identified as a concentration of poverty school. So that's how we added some counselors in the ESER fund, and the exit plan for that is, as the schools are identified as concentration of poverty schools, it won't provide additional counselors, but there'll be long-term funds to pay for that indefinitely for the future. But what we did get, and do get right now, is the advantage of having those counselors in place two and three years before the school gets identified as concentration of poverty. I know that is clear as mud, but I'm just trying to explain how we were trying to get the services for our students and have an exit plan for how those counselors would be paid long-term. We also used ESER funds to purchase or pay for up to six additional counselors and social workers that currently we have no off-ramp for. So when I say I don't know what's going to happen with these three positions, or if you made it six or made it 10 and they were funded, I think I'd want to let it up to our counseling team to determine, is it three new positions that aren't existing anywhere right now? Is it three short-term positions because they want to save some of the six that are in ESER funds with no off-ramp? Is it part of those six? You understand what I'm saying? We have six funds, six positions funded that currently we don't have an off-ramp to pull into the general fund. There's another six that we believe concentration of poverty will pay for, whether they're counselors or social workers. So I like to let that flexible right now. We certainly could increase the number. Of course, we got to sort that out when we get to our final budget numbers, but right now, we have six in the ESER funds that the plan is, they'd be eliminated unless they're of higher priority than three other positions anyplace else. And I'm going to assume, since we tried to do things with highest priority when we identified them in ESER, by the time we get out another year or two, that they still would be higher priorities, so.
And Dr. Michael, I think I could add to make that even maybe a little muddier. As we saw a decrease in our free and reduced rate this fall, some of the forecasting we did for the concentration of poverty counselors, they may, those schools may not receive concentration of poverty in the future if the free and reduced rate stays down. So we have other positions that we may lose.
We had a couple of schools that were right on the line to make the cut, especially, I think the last year's 55%, I think, is what I have in my head, and some of those schools were dropped in the low 50s. I mean, right now, it's difficult to convince a family to fill out a free and reduced meal plan when they're getting free and reduced meals. Every single student in our school system can have a free and reduced meal right now while we're in the COVID state. So we had like 1,700 applications that were rolling over from last year, and we encouraged families to complete those, complete those forms, continue services, but in reality, their services were going to continue anyhow. So we saw a slight decrease in our farm rate. I don't think our farm rate is actually, our free and reduced meal rate has changed. I just think our applications, as hard as the team has worked, sometimes until you feel the team has worked, sometimes until you feel the pain of you don't get that free meal, you don't complete the paperwork, but that does not exist for this year. So we're a little nervous that some of our pre-planning may may yet be another position or two that's not funded for the long term.
Mrs. Murray?
That actually was my question, and I was just trying to think how we could get the parents to continue to fill out those forms. If there was some way we could do that, because it is a problem, and it is hurting us, and.
We've had, we've had a lot of people that did complete the forms, and we're grateful for that. We didn't see as big as reduction as some of the other counties did a little bit. So again, for the concentration of poverty, just hurt us a little bit on the line. One of the things that Mr. Prue alluded to, we don't know what might happen in a legislative session and things, I think across the state, it appears that the poverty's down, which affects our funding formula. It's possible. I'm going to be hopeful that they might hold us harmless in that for one year or something. But I think we'd have to consider, if anything like that were to occur, unless there's a long-term something that addresses it, I think we'd have to consider that type of thing as one-time money. I know that doesn't address getting our farm rate up, and it doesn't address paying for long-term positions, but it is something we need to watch. If things like that develop, again, I think there'd be one-year patches to kind of allow for COVID. But I would recommend all that money would be considered as one-time money. The other one we're watching is, this year, they should only be paying for eligible pre-K students. But we've heard some rumblings that they might just pay for all students since they didn't get a good plan in place or don't have a plan in place of how to identify all these students properly. For one year, for one year, they might fund us for all of our pre-K students regardless of their income eligibility. If they do that, again, we might have a one-time windfall of some money, and we'd want to look for one-time expenses to put that towards.
Mr. Stauffer?
If I read this correctly, your budget, draft budget, requests 1.3 million above maintenance of effort from the county, right?
That's correct. With us being down, and I probably need to explain that, because our charge showed zero, and if we were any other department gone before the county commissioners, and there wasn't a maintenance of effort thing, I don't want to pick on any department, but if we were whatever department, and we went to the county commissioners, and we said, give us what you gave us last year, meaning no reduction over what you gave us last year, they probably would appreciate that. Most places, I'm sure, are going to win an ask for an increase. So when we say that costs the county commissioners zero, we mean zero over what they gave us last year. But in fact, with maintenance of effort, it is 1.3 million more than they have to by law to give us. Most departments, I'm not aware, go in and ask for a reduction. So we're just asking them, keep us where we were last year, and fund the educational effort money, is what the ask is in my budget right now. But it would require them giving 1.3 above what they're required to give by law, which would be driven by maintenance of effort, I think, is your question.
My question is, what's the plan if we don't get that 1.3 million?
We would have to, assuming there's no other adjustments from the state, we would have to make cuts to this draft budget.
Do we have any idea where those cuts would come?
Well, I mean, it potentially would reduce your salary resource pool, potentially could reduce the positions, you know, it's any number of things. We just have to look. I don't, I don't want to speculate on that. I mean, it means paying somewhere in what we're describing here.
That's my fear, that they're not going to give us that money, because they're tight with the money. And I have a bigger fear going on, since this is the last year for the escalator. What's the county's obligation down the road to give us any money in the future?
I mean, unless.
How's that work under the blueprint?
Unless our student body grows very much, I think our county commissioners are at a very low risk of what they have to give by law. As I kind of watched Kerwin unfold, and I want to start quoting numbers that are inaccurate, but I don't think it's a big lift on our county's part with Kerwin. I think it's a bigger shift to the state, and the state absorbs even a greater percentage of our budget going forward. The challenge we see for the next two years, I mean, we're estimating 6, 7 million next year, and 6, 7 million, maybe less than that the next year out. So we, so we have this spike up with the change in the foundation, the formula foundation, but the next two years, that flattens back out. But I think the lift on the county side is minimum, unless we grow substantially in numbers of students, and I'm not aware that that's going to occur.
And I think what's happening, Mr. Stauffer, I think you're asking about the formulas. So moving forward, the county has a portion of the formula they have to pay. So in a, in a perfect world, the state will pay 50%, and the county will pay 50%. But the share is well equalized by the state. So the likelihood is, based on history, the state will pay for 65% of the formula, and the county will pay for approximately 35% of the formula in Washington County. Foundation goes up fairly sizably over the next, you know, 10 years. And so as the foundation increases, that's going to drive the amount of increase that the county's going to have to give. So at current, and what we'll likely see over the next two years, maybe even into the third year, is the current maintenance of effort structure will exceed the county's portion of the new funding formulas. But by the time we get to 25 indefinitely by 26, I think what you'll see is that the county will now have to have an increase, because the formulas will outpace where we are with current MOE. Does that make sense?
So the county still has an obligation to fund us money under the blueprint?
Correct. And the escalator goes away in lieu of the mandatory increases in foundation set aside by the blueprint bill.
I mean, quite frankly, I find the blueprint confusing. I mean, maybe it's just me.
You're not alone.
We spent a good bit of time this fall, looking at the Department of Legislative Services charts, looking at, well, what is dictated by foundation? What enrollment projections did they use? What's the percentage when you look at comp ed, when you look at EL, when you look at special ed? What percentage of the foundation rate gets applied to the numbers of students in each of those counts? So that we could get a sense of, what's the funding look like moving forward? Right away out of the gate, because we're down in enrollment, we're already playing catch-up to the DLS estimates. You know, the bonus would be, in the out years, is if those 272 students that our enrollment is currently down on the average return to us, you know, I think as Mr. Chriswell, you know, showed last month, it was, you know, 600 or 700 students, if they return, the money comes with them when they return. And there could be a year where we get some catch-up if students return to us.
So I guess, kind of adding on to maybe some staffing things there, is the pre-K, we're adding a lot to the pre-K portion of the budget there. Is that because we're required to, or is this something that we're choosing to? I know you said that the grant is ending, and we're moving it to general fund, right?
So, I mean, an interesting opportunity we had last year, we were at 1,100, I don't want to quote numbers again, I'll have him wrong, you know, 1,080, 1,100 pre-K students two years ago, pre-COVID. Last year, we dropped 750, 800. So when the expansion grant came out this year, we thought, unless we could exceed 1,100, that we wouldn't be eligible for it. They shared that we would be eligible for the grant. So we applied for the grant, and our numbers spiked back up roughly to where they were two years ago. And in doing so, we were allowed to shift the expense that was already in the budget two years ago, back out to the grant, knowing that we had to pull it back into the general fund. But we wanted to take advantage of the pre-K expansion grants, since they were allowing us to. So we did that, and it helped the county pick up the value of that 1.7, yeah, 1.7 million. Otherwise, we'd have lost out on 1.7 million, even though it, in reality, was kind of a one-time fix or whatever. So we're really just going back, nothing's changed. Two years ago, we had about this many people. Last year, we had about this many people, and now we have about this many people. Two years ago, they were all in the general fund. This current year, the majority were in the general fund, except for the 12 teachers, 11 IAs, and now we're back to where we were two years ago with the staffing, with kind of, you know, that grant gone away. So it's not an expansion, it's not more more students. It was just a way for us to pick up 1.7 million in the short term and take advantage of a grant opportunity.
Thank you. And then, and then back on page.
Now, what else is going to happen in pre-K? Pre-K will go up substantially per student. So we were getting just shy of $5,000 per pre-K child, you know, so part of that formula's going to drive that to 10, and eventually, it drives it close to 20,000 per pre-K child. So by us being able to maintain that in our general fund budget, that's where we're going to pick up some money to continue with our pre-K program without charging anyone for pre-K, because the original Kerwin talks about charging families that are at 600% a certain amount of the poverty level, and above 600% of the poverty level. So we'll be able to offer universal pre-K. When we looked at our pre-K data, we did not see large differences between our eligible and ineligible pre-K students, so we're trying to maintain that. But that will be a windfall going forward if we can keep our pre-K enrollment up.
Excellent. And then back on page two of 41 there, the, and I guess going kind of back to the $11 million and the benefits, there is a lot of that because of the healthcare cost that we will have this year. And if so, where where did that come from?
I think you're talking about a resource pool number.
Yeah. Sorry, it was one of the last things there.
Board members, when you look at the 41-page document, if you look out to the right-hand side, although it's not true here for page two of 41, most of them will list a line-item number. If you refer to that line, we can get all in the same, same area.
I think the line that Mr. Evans is referring to, in the second section, it's the last one, right above the line, 10.7 million dollar increase. So.
So part of that, it's fortunate for Washington County, and this won't always be true. And we need to recognize that right now, we have a healthy healthcare fund balance. And it would appear for the second year in a row, and my recommendation, at least for right now, we don't have any information that says we need to increase our healthcare premium. When we increase the healthcare premium, it's an increase on the, whatever the increase is, it hits, you know, 15 to 18% portion on the employee side. But on the employer side, it hits an 80, 82, 85%, yeah, 80 to 85% on our side. So we've had years that our lift has been 6, 7, 8 million in healthcare. Right now, with a 0% healthcare increase, the lift for WCPS is zero. The lift for employees is zero. I do think that'll be helpful to address some of the inflation, in that people don't have their raise eaten up by a healthcare increase. I have heard from a couple of my counterparts, I think there are some systems that are going to see some double-digit increases in their healthcare costs. Right now, it does not appear that'll be the case for Washington County. So we are very fortunate if we can maintain a 0% increase in our health healthcare for this year. What we do need to recognize is, at some point, it is going to go up, and our side is substantial. Our contribution's over 40 million, you know, to the healthcare costs. So when it goes up, it goes up quickly on our side.
And what this line represents, so in the budget, what Mr. Siswell does as he prepares it is, we we right-size each individual employee's salary in the in the budget page that they're on to the current incumbents. And then in the section that is the employee benefits program, that's where we put the resource pool until the budget is approved, and then it gets dispersed throughout the budget. So what's driving that 10.7 million number is, if you go back to the slide for the resource pool, which was 10.2 million, that's being reflected on this employee benefits page. That's what's driving the 10.7 here, and then subsequently on that page further back in the budget, as well as increases in FICO, workers' comp, and employee benefits for positions that are coming from grants, where all those things were paid out of the grant, and they're coming to the general fund. So that's representative of the 10.7.
Okay. If you look at page 32 of 41, you can, you can see what Mr. Prue just highlighted.
Give everybody a chance to get there. Say again, 32 of 41?
Page 32 of 41. It's just the more detailed page of what you were referencing on the summary of page two.
So you can see the retirement, social security, workman's comp.
And then the big, the big number being the resource pool there, the last line.
So if we did have to increase health insurance premiums, I don't think we have to this year, but if we did, it's about 414,000 or more every percentage that you add. So it adds up in a hurry, because the employer portion is so large. What's that?
Say it one more time, for each 1% it costs how much?
For each 1% of the premium increase in the health insurance, it costs the board about 414,000. Right. If you look on, on that same page, line four, third column from the left, you see the number of budget for 23 is 41.379 million. So 1% of that is the 414,000. So if you had a 5% increase, it's over $2 million of new money required to do that.
So again, that's something that's working in our favor right now, that we have a healthy fund care, fund balance, healthcare fund balance. That won't always be true. So when we get resource money, sometimes it'll have to go to other costs.
And through good help with, you know, the board's guidance, the healthcare committee, actively looking at our plan each year, we're currently significantly outpacing healthcare inflation. We're beating all models right now.
Yes, we are. And then two other questions I have from page two of 41. Up there in the instructional programs, there's about a million dollars added to the classroom instruction office of instructional supervision. What, is there like a, an example of a couple of things that might be included in that?
We'll have Eric take us to the page. So this, what you're looking at is a summary page. So when you see that, it's all smooshed together on that page, but these are summaries of other pages that are back in the document.
Okay.
What line are we looking at?
Well, he's looking at the summary page.
Yeah.
I think we're looking at page seven of 41.
It'd be pages seven through nine of 41 will be all the items that add up to that approximately million dollars. The couple of big things that the main drivers there are the bringing back of the 12 pre-K teacher and 11 IA positions. There, that was around 1.4, 1.5 million. So that's making up the bulk of it.
Okay.
And then also, if you look at the, on page eight, about halfway down, the instructional substitutes, where we're talking about increasing the instructional sub-rate, that's 365,000 that hits this category.
Eric, give the board members a line item on page eight.
On page eight?
Line 40.
If you look all the way out to the right-hand side, you'll see rows of italicized numbers. If you look at line 40, you see a 17.5% increase. And then you move over one more line, you see the 365,000. That reflects the additional $20 per day for substitute pay. Is that correct, team?
Yes.
Correct.
How do you come about getting that number when we have so many vacancies in our substitute positions on a daily basis? How do you, how do you go about getting that? Not that I'm necessarily disputing that one, that's more of a curiosity question.
Eric pulls out his abacus.
Yeah.
It was multiple things, and you hit on a good point, because really, if you look at the last two, couple of years, FY '20 and '21, that we've completed, they were COVID years, so they weren't really complete years. So I tried to look at sort of an average or what the high year was in FY '20 and '21, and assumed that we missed about 25% of the school year where we didn't have subs, that in a normal year, we would have. So I took that number, added 25%, and then the $20 increase amounts to about a 17 and 1/2% increase. So then I added that number to it, and then looked at each of the sub-lines to see, you know, did we have enough there, or did we not have enough there?
Thank you.
And I think while we're on subs, Dr. Simmer, one second, I think our C subs, which are high school to Plymouth subs, I think in order to meet the $15 or the 1325 for next year, I think we needed to creep their wage up a little bit, no matter what. Again, the sub, the sub thing's also a challenge in that if we're successful in getting subs every day, we could fill 100% of the sub openings. We could drive the sub number, you know, out of what's budgeted. So again, it's just more calculated risk, and I don't want to say. And I don't want to say a guess, but to your point, Mr. Evans, it is a little bit of, you heard what Eric's explanation was. We trust, we trust his math and, but it is, you know, what if we could fill 100% of our subs every single day? Um, now that would reduce the need to pay for teachers or other staff members covering, covering classes. So that would change a little bit. Right now, we're taking that out of ESSER for the most part, I think. So we got a little bit of offset on those things. We also can charge that kind of pay to the sub-line since we're not getting subs. I think we could charge that to the sub-line in the future if it's a combination of both. A budget is an estimate comprised of many other estimates. Right. I mean, it's exactly what this is. This is an actual, it is a budget. That's why you see the numbers surfact. Dr. Semer?
Is there a place that I can find out the breakout for ABEL? Or is that just absorbed by the other categories?
ABEL, I think, is a mix of kindergarten, one to five, six to eight, and high school, uh, as well as probably broken out in phys ed, music, art. So what, what page is staffing on? It's going to be a mix of those places.
Well, most of them are still in ESSER, but.
Well, I'm going to qualify that, it's just going to be on the right page here for them.
They would be, if, if they were brought into the general fund, I think we may have a couple of positions. And they would just be lumped like on page seven of 41, just in a regular like K to five classroom teacher. They don't, they're not really, you can't differentiate, or they're not differentiated on here.
Right. So there's not a line item for ABEL right now. We are paying two or three positions, I think, out of the general fund that we expanded in ABEL after we submitted the ESSER grant. But ABEL is paid for through the ESSER grant right now. Um, our plan is for those positions to be absorbed into these line items that already exist. And we're looking at, as particularly as elementary and middle school enrollment continues to decline, if that's true, we'll be reducing staff at various schools. And then we'll pick up those ABEL positions over the next three years in the general fund. So that's our transition from ESSER to the general fund is through, um, reduction in staff at various schools as a result of reduction of enrollment. You know, three round would become two round, a four round would become three round. Uh, a six or eight-person department would become, you know, five or six. And as we do that, we would pick those positions up. And you, you won't even notice it happening. It'll just be happening in these lines that already exist, unless we need to transfer within the, the categories to another, to another level.
Thank you.
Mr. Gupta?
So just to clarify, is ABEL currently right now only in ESSER funds?
ABEL is primarily funded from ESSER funding. So we didn't have the means to cut, uh, staff across the board. We weren't sure at what rate students are going to return. So we're thinking we're going to, and we didn't know how many ABEL students we were going to have. And it was ineligible expense for ESSER. So that's why we paid it for out of ESSER.
Just out of curiosity, who's included now? Because this was something that I asked years ago. I don't know if it was 2014 when I was a candidate or 2016 when I was coming on the board. But, uh, I do know that the previous superintendent was still in office. Who now is included in the executive leadership team? This is something I saw on page two of 41. Who's, that would be you and who else?
Well, I'm going to let Eric answer the question. I mean, when I see, look at senior staff, um, looking at Dr. Pugh, Dr. Willow, Mr. Prue, and Elisa Ram would be my senior leadership. But what, the reason this book is designed around state guidelines, so we have to put people in various categories according to the state rules. And that's how they make it across the state when they do county-by-county comparisons. Uh, so those things are driven that way. So.
So if you look at page 34 of 41, that I think is what you were referencing, the executive leadership team page, the three professionals listed there represent the superintendent, the chief operating officer, and then one of the assistant superintendents, Mrs. Pugh, or Dr. Pugh is in that grouping. Mr. Willow is in instructional supervision due to, we can put him there due to the MST reporting guidelines, based on what functions report to him.
What was that again? What, he's where?
He's in instructional supervision.
Instruction, okay.
That would, that would be page three, I believe.
And chief counsel is on the board's page. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Which? Page five. Which page 33 reflects professional staff under the board.
And again, that's reflective of the state budget guideline booklet. Um, it's not a reflection of, you know, how we necessarily would organize it. It's how the, the state directs us to organize it.
Dr. Michael, could we talk a little bit about the resource pool? You, you painted a pretty gloom picture of where we are with regard to, uh, teachers and, and people and being able to compensate them in order to retain them and to attract them. And, you know, when I look at this anticipated revenue, we're talking about 1.3 million dollars, which would come from the commissioners if they hold us harmless. And then the escalator, uh, the effort escalator, which my understanding is unless they want to pay some sort of penalty, they are obligated to give us that money. So that all totals 2.65 million, correct?
Over, oh, that's our estimate of what it would cost them over what they're giving us this year.
Okay. So this would be our ask over what they have been giving us.
Correct.
Correct?
So the 1.3, that technically they would not be required to give by law because of maintenance of effort.
Right.
They gave it to us this year. So I think when, and this is what I'm saying, when all the other departments go in, they don't go in with a maintenance of effort and ask, expect a reduction. They expect to get what they got last year and go up, I think. And I think we're just asking to be treated the same as any other department.
Right.
Hold us harmless for 275 children. You scattered 275 children among 46 schools. You know, five, six, seven children per school doesn't allow me, you know, seven grades in an elementary, one kid per grade. Doesn't allow me to reduce teachers or the principal or assistant principal. They're so scattered around, we just can't make an adjustment like that. While we might save a little bit on paper products or something, we're still going to heat the building, cool the building, run the buses, those kind of things. So the whole concept of the maintenance of effort per child was to protect school systems from taking big hits or reductions and having to educate children on less. We just need help. And the kind of commissioners have done this before. Years we've dropped 30, 40 kids, and one year we dropped seven or eight kids. They've held us harmless before. And we're just in such a state of flux. I don't know whether some of the students on ABEL will come back in, whether some of the students that are on homeschooling or private school will come back next year. We do have a couple of developments that continue to grow and expand. I don't know what that will do. But our enrollment number always trails a year. So we find out what our enrollment is September 30th, and it drives the number for the following year. But in the meantime, you have the need of students with you for a full year. So we're just hoping they would hold us harmless for that. So what it means is exactly what you gave us last year, plus the 2.65, unless there's some other change.
So, so my thought, so, and correct me if my thinking is not correct. With this 2.65 million dollars, more than what we were getting last year, you have in your budget, you are able to have in your budget a $9,663,018 salary. If we were to ask the commissioners for more than this, for more than holding us harmless, because they have, the state says they need to give us the other, correct?
Below S.
They need to give us that, okay?
In case of effort, yes.
Okay. So for us to ask for additional above this, we would be able to increase that resource pool and make greater strides towards meeting that, that goal of $15 per hour minimum wage for those who get an hourly wage, and working towards getting that $60,000 starting salary for teachers. And compensate our teachers and employees in a way that we could attract and retain them if we were to ask for additional funds from the commissioners.
And, and we rewarded the funds, and you didn't have any other priorities to put those funds towards.
Okay. So right now, with the picture that you painted, I kind of see that as a priority for you.
Right. The resource pool, the reason I didn't add 10 counselors and the reason I didn't come in with a whole group of, uh, reading tutors, math tutors, and making them permanent in the budget, the reason I didn't, uh, increase a variety of other staffing and/or intervention strategies and things like that is to preserve as much as possible for the resource pool. We're just trying to back our way out of ESSER. We're very, very fortunate that we had the ESSER money to kind of, it's unfortunate we had COVID because the setback from COVID unfortunately continues to mount. You know, for our students that aren't attending school regularly, there's going to be a lot of work to catch these students up, not only from last year, but from what's occurring this year. We have significant attendance challenges right now. We're going to give an update to the board on that in early February as we close out the first semester. But those children, I'm concerned, are getting further and further behind. So we have a lot of things that could be done differently. Uh, but right now, I've focused on a, a high priority of, of, uh, trying to offer a reasonable raise for this year, but try to also make up for the last two years, which will always be difficult. Once you're in the rears, I mean, when we gave a 1%, a 1.25%, we didn't even keep up with inflation two years ago or this current year. Our staff lost ground two years ago with a 1% increase, and this year with a 1.25% increase. And, um, I don't know how you make up for lost ground that way. Plus, we didn't give steps. So there was no recognition for service or anything like that. Other employee groups in local government, you know, did get steps and a percent increase. Uh, our, our employees did not get a step, so I do want to make that clear. But my budget is, is the most significant portion of the budget. And a significant priority in the budget is to provide raises to the greatest extent possible. More money would allow the board to give larger raises. But right now, we have to count on getting 1.3 million more than what we've historically been able to secure from the kind of commissioners. I don't know the last time when above maintenance of effort was added in a significant amount.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, since I've been on the board, I always want to say it's about, are the percentage of people cost to our budget to program is what, 87% to?
It's right around 86, 87%.
And has that changed with this budget?
No, it's, it's still right there in that ballpark.
So about 87% of our budget is people costs. Um, will this budget, um, what do we call, are they called relief subs? What are the subs that are permanent at each school now?
Resident, resident subs.
Resident subs, yeah.
Resident subs. Is that, will we be able to expand that at all in this budget?
Well, the resident subs right now are paid for out of the substitute line item. We pay them, um, more than our regular three levels of subs to have them there every day. Uh, I've had very, very positive feedback from principals regarding resident subs. I think some schools have one, some schools have as many as four or five, uh, based on the size of the school. I mean, we have schools that have 100-plus staff members that require subs when they're out. So, you know, even five at a school like that is, you know, 5% of the staff being out and covering five, five positions in a staff of 100 people. We haven't really allowed to expand that more because they get paid more. They would get the $20 an hour. So all those resident subs, I think there's about 60 some of them right now, maybe 55 to 60. Carrie was here, she could tell you right off the top of her head. Dr. Pugh's not here, she could tell you off the top of her head. But all of those people will get a $20 per day increase as well as all substitutes. Uh, we have a couple of itinerant subs. Those are really tough positions to fill, but those are people that work every day but go to someplace different. The resident subs know what building they're going to every day. And it's rare that they're not, I'm, I'm, I don't know when they have not been needed. Maybe the first couple of days of school and pretty much everybody's there. But pretty much after that, they're needed every day.
Right. And I, I've also heard very positive, um, feedback from principals about having that option.
I would love to expand those positions. I'd also love to fill the 44 IA openings that.
Sure.
You know, have fluctuated between 35 to 45 since the start of the school year and quite a few other openings we've had.
Um, okay, but, uh, school counselor funding, I too agree with President Williams. I, I love the fact that we want to add three more. I don't think it's enough. When we talk about school counselors, how much of their day is dedicated to, to mental health issues? And how much of their, and I know this is a broad question, but, uh, we've just heard such a need about mental health concerns with students. But I also know, do, do school counselors also deal with career and, and college guidance and?
Right. So our counselors, depending upon the school and the number of counselors and the number of students and the ratio, I mean, it varies widely. So career, college counseling, those types of things, particularly for high school, although we try to do, uh, career counseling earlier in middle school, uh, even some mention of it in elementary. They have lessons that they go in and present, particularly elementary and middle. You know, financial aid and support like that for, for high school. Uh, I would say the large part of our counselors, when we say mental health, is to help our students work through a small crisis, conflict resolution with other students, listen and understand, and then connect them to resources. Uh, our counselors are not psychiatrists or psychologists. We, we, you know, when we need those services, we want to have professional services for that. But our counselors obviously do an excellent job as a listening ear and trying to connect students to support. Same with our social workers, it's just a little bit different in that they are connected more to community resources and other supports and family supports. Uh, so that would kind of be a little bit of the difference for a social worker versus a counselor. But they too lend a listening ear and try to help students find resources and a way to get the help and, uh, you know, get to school and, and resources to, you know, clothes and just things like that, anything that they might need.
Got it. Yeah, I mean.
Percentage wise, how much, when you say they spend on mental health, I can't put a qualifier to that. But to run small groups and things like that, I'm sure they prefer to have a much higher percentage than what they have right now.
Right. No, and, and I think, you know what I'm getting at is that we certainly know that the, the needs that are crucial and mental health being one of them, teacher support being another. We've been able to, and, and obviously behavior and discipline issues. And I just want to make sure that the budget reflects that. So that's why I asked about the school counselor. Again, I'm, I'm, I'm thrilled that we are able to continue to offer universal pre-K. I think that's proven to be an absolute need. I'm pleased that you said that the state is looking at, because I know right now in the blueprint, some counties may have to charge parents to have their kids come to pre-K. And in Washington County, we do not charge. Is that still, is that what you were saying? They may, they may change that in this coming year?
I don't think they're going to change that. I think what they would change is they haven't sorted out exactly who they would charge and who you, and this would be an option to the county. It's not a requirement of the state, it's an option of the county. The state is only going to pay for eligible students.
Got it.
So the state is not paying for all of our pre-K students currently at that, what the eligible students would make. But the way we've designed a budget over the last three or four years and embedded, um, the pre-K, universal pre-K for everyone within our current operating budget, we can sustain that going forward. And actually, the increase in, uh, funding for our eligible students will help us fund not only the pre-K program, will help us fund other portions of the budget indirectly by having additional funds as that number goes up and up and up. So I think the other challenge for a lot of the other school systems is space, getting the program started, moving from half-day to full-day. We took advantage of our declining numbers in elementary and flipped those teachers into pre-K. We took advantage of our declining numbers in elementary to pick up space. So that's how we were able to kind of strategically do it as an initiative based on being next to last in kindergarten readiness and seeing as has a huge challenge going forward. If we continued, starting that far behind, I, I don't see how we would. If we continued starting that far behind, I don't see how we would have ever caught up, so.
Yeah, and I think we've, in the business world, we always hear about ROI, return on investment. We've certainly seen a major return on investment with our kindergarten readiness scores just climbing and climbing and climbing. So I'm glad to see that's in there. I think I had one other question. What was it? Taking notes and, maybe come back to me if other people have questions.
Okay, I have one more question for you.
Oh, yes, one more. We have 55 resident subs and three itinerants. I just had a message from Jerry Baker, so. Dr. Zemper?
Do we have in here support for teachers and administrators who are required to have National Board by 2024 and 2026?
There's nothing built in this budget for that. We're going to have to figure out how that happens for administrators. They'd have to teach classes to get their National Board certification, so there's a great deal of work to look at and figure out on that over time. But there's nothing in this budget designated specifically for that.
I have two more questions. On page 33 of 41 for the elected board member services, I see a $35,000 increase in legal fees. And I mean, that number's been kind of all over the place the last five budgets here. What does that go toward, or where are those numbers coming from?
I think when we looked at that, we were just looking at the actuals from the last several years, and we took an average of those and increased the budget to meet that average.
So is that something where maybe it's not appropriate for us to handle some kind of legal question or something, or, you know, where?
Our goal is, long-term, now that we're fully staffed in our legal department, that we'll be able to address some of the things that we have been going to outside counsel for. I think with Ms. Ram's background in special ed, there'll be some special ed, things that we've been going to outside counsel for that she can respond to because she has an extensive background in special ed. We haven't had that before in our legal department. She won't be able to replace all due process hearings and things like that that we really need to go to outside counsel for. So I think over time, we're going to see this number flatten out or go down. But I mean, there's a variety of things that we have to use outside counsel for to represent the board or for legal counsel and things like that. To your point, it's been all over the place, and it just depends on what happens in any given year.
I think what we recognize is you look at the historical numbers. With a reduced operating year in FY '20, a good bit of virtual instruction in '21, we actually saw a decrease in our needs for outside legal services. But when you go back to FY '18 and FY '19, you average those two years, it's nearly 100,000 per year, where we brought this line item up to about 85,000. So we're trying to massage money from one account to another account, places we had savings, places where we felt we needed money to bring that forward so that it reduces the number of line item changes or category changes later in the year.
Makes sense. And then the last one is, and this is kind of in a couple, it's a general, and I think you answered this before when you spoke about, you know, required, you're putting this in here for state requirements. But, you know, it seems like it's a little disproportionate when in purchasing services on page 36 of 41, professional salaries are almost 93,000, and clerical and support service salaries are almost 208,000. And it's that way in a couple of other ones. Is that because of how you have to go and put that in there? It just seems like those numbers are a little disproportionate there.
Well, that's a particular, that's a particular department with one administrator and four educational support personnel staff. So they're allocated in that way. I don't know that it's necessarily disproportional. It's just the staffing that we have, where we have basically four clerks and the purchasing supervisor.
I just think, you know, when you go and say like educational support or something like that, it could be someone with a four-year degree or, you know, doing something other than clerical support that might otherwise be considered professional. Is that kind of what you're getting at there?
Right, so I think, and Eric, correct me here, but I think the delineation is based on which of the three groups of employees they would fall into. So in professional staff, we're looking at someone in the administrator supervisor group. When you're looking at clerical and support, that's someone who would be part of our educational support personnel union, and then, of course, our teacher line. Those are the three primary groupings, am I correct?
Yes. Seems to be a pretty high description, but, okay. If it makes sense to everyone else.
I had a question. How many positions do we have on grants that we don't currently plan to move to the general fund?
How many total positions on grants? Now, if you're talking about ESSER, staff might be able to make an estimate on that, but we have a lot of grants that are funding. I mean, at one point, we had about 20 grants just involved with ESSER, COVID, those kind of things. We have that whittled down now to three or four major grants, ESSER 2, ESSER 3. I think there's still a mental health grant that we have a couple of years to spend out. But we've always historically had a lot of restricted funds in grants. Title 1, for instance, we have a whole bunch of teachers in Title 1 schools that are funded out of Title 1 grants. Title 2 funds mentor teachers and other supports in professional development. Title 3, somewhere we get into EL, I can't remember if that's Title 3 or Title 4, Title 3. So we have a lot of grants that fund historically running and will be reoccurring grants that fund a lot of staff. ESSER is one of the areas where it does run out. I think it's September of '25 unless they extend, and that's with the, actually with the one-year extension of all the federal money, unless there's another federal wave that we have to have the federal funds spent. So a rough estimate of how many people we have still remaining in ESSER, many of which will be picked up in concentration of poverty, some of our tutors, some of the social workers, some of the counselors, and ABLE, which will be picked up in attrition. And some of the others will actually, when the grant runs out, they'll be eliminated. All the staff will have a position because we have enough turnover that would pick up, whether it's IAs or teachers or administrators, that we would pick them up in turnover credit. And we have an exit plan for every position. Mr. Prue, do you have a number?
I do. So we expect, as we get close to the end of the allocation of the ESSER funds, which is September 30 of 2025, which is the end of the federal fiscal year, approximately 50 positions will get moved into other grants. It might be MA billing, which is a Medicare Assistance Billing, a Medical Assistance Billing, we may move into Title 2 or in the concentration of poverty grants. And then we'll have somewhere probably between 20 and 30 positions that will be absorbed through attrition, where those positions will cease to exist. And we'll try to, we'll absorb those folks into other positions that may be open during that fiscal year.
Okay, so just to clarify, for the next few years, do we not see that many positions getting moved from grant money to general fund money?
I think the vast majority of positions that are being moved probably are moving this year. Because I really think as we looked at the blueprint funding formulas over the next couple of years, there's not going to be the volume of money, of state money that we have this year. So we really took an opportunity this year to try to move as many of the positions as we could. As we, we do have a few technology positions in ESSER funding. If you get out to FY '25, there's a portion of the blueprint that is going to force us to allocate a section of our foundation every year to technology. So we're actually tying those together so that some of those positions may move into the general fund when we have to provide additional funding into technology at that time. So again, we've prefunded positions to provide service knowing that we're going to have an increase in the general fund in an out year. So I do think this is, you've seen the majority of the positions.
Okay.
Any other questions, colleagues?
I remembered a couple of my questions. Where, Eric, where do we find the school resource officer funding?
It'll be on page 28 of 41, and it is line 7, with a budget of 880,000 currently.
It's 880,000, and we're not sure about the impact of the raise that the commissioners just passed for the sheriff's deputies, right?
We've received some preliminary numbers. We're still reviewing those numbers to ensure that we are in coordination with what the numbers we've received from county staff. This is also the end of our four-year agreement with the city of Hagerstown. As you may recall, we have six officers allocated under the contract with the city of Hagerstown, and four officers, four deputies from the county sheriff's office. I do expect to see an increase from the city of Hagerstown as well. I do expect, you know, no inside negotiations knowledge here by any means, but I do expect that the city is going to have to keep pace with what's going on with the county. If you watch that presentation, what Sheriff Mullen dor talked about was really an exit of his officers to either outside of the police force entirely or leaving to go to other agencies, whether it be Frederick County, Montgomery County, where those deputies could make more money. The same is happening in the city, but he's also subject to folks leaving city, police department, going to the county sheriff's office and staying inside the community because they can make more money at the county. So I do think he's going to have to keep pace, and I expect we'll see a significant increase from the city as well.
I think that's a safe bet. Go ahead.
Well, what we're anticipating, Mr. Beckford, is in the second draft of superintendent's budget, that will reflect the increase there when we have a more accurate number. Assuming the city fills the empty positions, you know, that makes a big difference. I mean, we're picking up turnover credit there. It might even be how we're paying for the balance of the year with the county and the fact that we have, we're down a couple of resource officers. We want to get those positions filled, and we want to fully fund them. But probably my second draft that I present, I think in January, we'll probably have a number in there. We're hoping to get that ironed out and have a number in there that reflects that. I probably would increase the requests of the county to pay for those resource officers as well.
Yeah, that was my next question. Remind me again, we're only one of two counties that pays for our school resource officers out of our budget?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any change in that. Three or four years ago, we did a request across the state. How many people had to pay for resource officers from their educational funding? And to our knowledge, it was only one other system.
Got it. So it is, and we're required by law to have SROs, every, correct?
We're required by law to have a plan that we have SRO coverage for every school, not an SRO in every school, that would be ideal. But we're required by law to have identified coverage plans.
Known as adequate coverage.
Adequate coverage. And in most counties, that law, they abide by that law by paying for it through their county governments?
Generally speaking, yes.
Okay, got it. So it wouldn't be beyond us to request that the county takes that over?
I would not think so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Prue, you said we're at the end of a four-year agreement with one of the departments. What kind of agreement do we have with the other?
The county's agreement runs year to year, and the city's agreement was a, previously was a four-year. I don't know, I had a brief discussion last week with Chief Kifer. I don't know if he is going to be looking to go year to year or whether he's going to look to do another four-year agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Beckford, did you have more?
I had one more, just asking Jeff, since I know you live and breathe this stuff, how confident are you in these revenue projections?
Hmm. I really think our state number is tight. I think the question is going to be, what does the state do with potentially what they have, which is, I think, what I think I am hearing is systems across the state are down in enrollment, and they're down in free and reduced meal percentage. So those are areas where the state, in theory, has money available that they were anticipating to give to schools that they may not have to. What do they do with those funds? As Dr. Michael indicated, the state potentially has not provided clear enough guidance to all the LEAs to identify pre-K students by tier 1, tier 2, tier 3 for funding purposes. As a result, they may, there's rumblings that they may choose to fund all pre-K students. That would be additional funding. I think we're likely to see more state funding than less, if I had to take a guess. As you may have also caught last week, the state also wrote up their revenue projections for FY '22 and '23 by a combined 500 million, billion?
Six billion or something.
Like a billion dollars in total between the two years, so. And they put a lot of money in flow-through in their fund reserve balance at the end of FY '21. So it feels like the state is in a significant place, you know, to fund some things if they so choose to, if they provided, wanted to provide a hold harmless on some numbers, they could do that. But at the same time, they offered less money to the interagency commission on school construction for the capital improvement program this year, where they reduced that available funding by 25%. So I say that to say I don't have a crystal ball.
Got it.
I do believe any additional funding we get will most likely be one-time money or money not to count on for the future. So I think we do need to approach any of that with caution. I mean, I'm very optimistic that make, could be some other money. Maybe we could do some type of one-time something. Again, we just, we just need to, I'm hoping we know something sooner rather than later. I guess the governor's budget will come out, we'll hear things. I did, I thought I saw an article maybe a week or two ago that the out-years of Kerwin were at risk. In January, we're talking about a state structural deficit of a couple billion dollars. Now the state's got a surplus, but then I saw some type of article that sounded like Kerwin was at risk in the out-years. I don't know how far out that was, but.
I saw the same one, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, you know, what do all those things be? We just don't really know.
Got it.
Mrs. Murray?
I'm sorry, I just was going to say, I saw the same revenue projections from the state going up and along with gambling not going down and actually expanding in the state. So the state seems to be doing well as far as this coming year when it comes to revenue. So hopefully that's good for education.
Similar to us, with ESSER funding, the state got a lot of ESSER funding, and the county's gotten ESSER funding. So I saw an article today, I didn't read the article, I just saw the headlines. I think it was Howard County was providing 8 million to the school system to provide additional raises to staff. I assume it meant mid-year because of all that's happening here with the pandemic. So that wasn't, Howard County School System using their money to support staff as we have with that 4% bonus at the end of last year or 4% retention money we did for this year. But that was the county investing their money that way, their AARP money.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murray?
I want to jump back to SROs, I'm sorry, I couldn't get in fast enough. What I just wanted to say and put out there to the public is, the state says we have to have coverage, but the way we do it, having designated coverage, is the best way to do it. Because if, suppose we said, okay, we have to have coverage, and whoever was supposed to be covering, if they weren't designated to the school system, they were out covering something in the county. We could potentially have a situation where we didn't have coverage. So the way we do it is the best way to do it, but it's still not fair that the funding has to come from our educational budget when it's a safety budget issue and should come from the county, so.
And all those speed cameras only are in front of schools.
Exactly.
Colleagues, any other questions? Okay, I'd like to call your attention then to the budget calendar. As you've heard, January will be a month where we will be getting more information from the state with regard to state aid and the staff and Dr. Michael will have an opportunity to make adjustments to the budget draft to determine excess or shortfall. And coming up in February, then, we have the opportunity for the board to meet again in a second work session. And then, in very early February, February 1st, unless this changes, we will have our draft budget for public hearing. So.
Will that be in the same meeting, or?
It'll be the same day, it won't be the same meeting. It will be the same day. I think what we've done in the past is to have the hearing as part of our business meeting. We've adjourned the business meeting or paused the business meeting to allow for the public hearing, and then when the public hearing was over, then we resumed our business meeting.
I know, I personally. I know, I, I personally agreed to this along, along with most others here, but it seems like maybe would it be better for the public to be able to gather more questions or anything like that if we move that adoption of the budget to the following meeting in February?
I think, Mr. Evans, you have, you have a couple of adoptions. The first part of February, the board adopts the superintendent's draft as their draft.
Okay.
And then it goes through a process where the budget advocacy and review committee will meet and review your budget and provide some testimony back to you at the hearing. Community members at that point, clearly, I mean, the budget is already public now, but they'll have opportunities where the, the community can provide public, which includes at the budget hearing, which currently is scheduled for March 1st. And then the board actually approves their budget the middle of March. That would be the meeting after the hearing. So you have several approvals as, as the budget works through the process, which allows input for the public along the way.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Prue, my question to you is, do you think with regard to the dates here, that we're pretty realizing that, that, you know, this is a document that is subject to change?
The, the only other change, we did receive notice from the county, if you're on the back page of the, of the budget calendar, there's tentatively a date there at March 15th for joint meeting with the county. The county is not meeting that day. They've requested us to meet on the 8th.
On the 8th?
Yes, ma'am, March 8th. With, of course, with details and times to be confirmed. That's the only change I see to the budget calendar is we meet. Of course, you know, we, the board typically will approve a budget, and then pending whatever happens at the county level, sometimes the board needs to reconvene and reopen the budget for additional drafts in, in May and early June, depending on what happens with the county's budget approval process.
Right. Thank you.
I think that's all we have for the budget for right now. We'll, you know, just keep updated here as legislative session begins, as we get our second draft, as we get more information from some other changes that may occur between now and the second draft, the superintendent's budget will, will have those things reflected. Then, of course, the board can add or delete to the budget once you get it. I mean, it's, it's yours at that point when you adopt it. And certainly, anything could change that, that you so choose to do so. So thank you for your time and attention today.
Mr. Vicford, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the staff. I, I've been on the board for five years now, and I know we've tried very hard to make it so that it's understandable for us and easy for us to find information. And I think we've, we found a very good system. So I appreciate all the, the hard work that goes into it and the graphics and the line items and the numbers and all that. It's fantastic. When you're dealing with spreadsheets, it can get really complicated, and it's very easy to, to digest this budget. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Michael.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Prue.
Really, the team does a great job. We met 22 different meetings to go through the budget line by line with various supervisors, and the team sat through all that. And then they, there's a lot behind all these numbers. They're just not thrown out there. You know, we, we send Eric and David off at a rub, and they crunch this random numbers, and we come back and we look at it, and we want something else, and it goes over and over and over, so, to make the budget come together. So we think we've offered a very, very conservative budget at this point in our ask, and that we would hope that we would get support from the state and our funding agencies.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandenburg, Mr. Sisler.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Michael. Colleagues, we will be meeting in the conference room for closed session. Okay? Thank you.
2:45? 2:45?